I am Michael Wild, Chairman of the Town and Monroe Plan and Zoning Commission. Welcome to the August the 3rd, 2023 regular meeting of the Town and Monroe Plan and Zoning Commission. It is now seven AM. Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, Intimate Republic, through which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as one.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll do the, well, we have to seat an alternate.
Dominic S.
Dominic S., all right. So then what we'll do next is call, we're all starting with Dominic.
Dominic Smangalino, alternate seated.
Dominic, bonita, alternate.
Ryan Townend, Commissioner.
Leanne Brozzi, Commissioner.
Robert Weston, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Hey, thank you very much. Next, we have general public participation. This is the time of all of our meetings where the public is invited to participate in any way they would like. Questions? This has to be on a topic that's not before the commission tonight. So if you have questions or comments that has to do with one of the public hearings tonight, there'll be a separate time for those questions or comments. But this is just general public participation. Please raise your hand if anyone here would like to participate, like anything to say to the commission. Seeing none anyone online, this goes for viewers as well, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our first public hearing. This public hearing comes in three parts. We'll, this is continued from 7:06:23, all three parts. Do you have any exhibits?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have Exhibit Number Five, Engineering Comments, dated July 5th. And for the second application, we have Engineering Comments dated 7:05:23, and Zone Change Area Map, Use Map and Narratives dated July 19th, 2023. And for the third application, we have Engineering Comments dated July 5th, 2023, and Response to Comments and Revised Plans dated July 27th, 23. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and then for the applicant tonight, who we start with?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Kribsen. I'm here for 2500 Turnpike LLC. This is, as no continuation from the last hearing, publicly tonight, it's a tagline, if you're spending a wonderful meal, also with me is Mark Rocky from VHB, the project engineer, license engineer on the project, and Rich Root, the architect. So just briefly, we had a conference before, so when we started the ARB review, we hadn't been, had no approval from the ARB yet at the time of the last meeting. And also, there were several comments from the commission and from staff, and I think fire police department, and maybe the town engineer, that Mark Rocky's worked hard with his team. And then lastly, there was a question about the size of the district, the zoning district, and the minimum acre required, as being required for that. And I'll talk about that after Mark runs through the site plan changes he's made. I think significantly advanced or addressed the concerns by the staff or by your commission, and it's taken a lot of work, working in conjunction with Starbucks and also getting their approval on that. But briefly, with respect to the ARB, we had an ARB meeting, we had two meetings. The first meeting, there was three pallets that were pallets or color material, material pallets that are recommended or allowed by Starbucks. I shouldn't say recommended, I should say allowed. The ARB did not like any of those because they were either too dark or they contained, we're going to contemplate the use of Ethis material, and the ARB did not like that, the look of the material or the color pallets. So we came back at the following meeting with a much lighter pallet based on Starbucks' approval. ARB based their approval on that color, and since then Starbucks has discontinued that color, but there's been a slight change in the color from a, like a paler white or a white to a very light gray. But Rich Root is going to go over that presentation for the elevating visualist, so it's figured substantially in compliance with what the ARB had. So unless there's any questions or comments from me, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mark Rocky to run down all of the different site plan changes.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
All right? Zoom in, yes. Yes. Okay, again, for the record, my name is Mark Rocky. I'm a project manager with VHB, office is located at 103.07 in Weatherfield, Connecticut. And we had presented the site plan previously. I'll just give you a quick pre-orientation here of the proposed Starbucks with drive-through here. Spring Hill Road is to the southward development. Monroe Turnpike is located to the east of our development. One curb cut's located off of Monroe Turnpike in the northeast corner. It's a right in, right out. We still have to go to DOT for review of that. Also have a full access curb cut off of Spring Hill Road here. Again, everybody knew that we had a drive-through off to the rear of the building with the concrete pad and concrete drive-through lane coming around, splitting into a double lane for 15-car queue, which was required by Starbucks to make the site work. So, you know, a lot of times we think we have it right until we come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we hear your concerns, we know how this is a nice attractive location in town, we know that it'll be a busy use, so what we heard was that there is, there are some concerns with the queuing for the drive-through facility. So probably one of the, one of the more significant changes we were able to make, we were able to directly work with Starbucks in a comedy, was this, this southern drive-out here. Previously, it was at 17 feet. It did not have this lane striping. It was a 17-foot wide lane, which was zoning compliant for angled parking spaces, but we, we did hear your concerns, went back to Starbucks and said, what could we do here? We did the best we could with revising the site plan, and what we were able to do is previously, these parking spaces were at 60-degree angles. Were able to modify that to 45-degree angles, and what that does is frees up the room for the drive-out here. We were also able to adjust some of the building, the actual building shade. This is a non-prototypical, so it's not the prototype for Starbucks, so we had a little bit of freedom in adjusting some of the internal building walls, gain a little bit of room. So we trimmed out a couple feet off the front, put it in the back, maintained the 2,500 square feet, but what that was able to do was change this drive aisle from 17 feet to 22 feet. And we added this, this pavement striping to bisect the lane, so now we have a true dedicated drive-through lane with the drive-through pavement markings. So if anybody comes in from Spring Hill Road, they'll immediately, immediately see the pavement markings and then enter this 10-foot wide dedicated drive-through lane, or if they want to walk in the store, or walk in the restaurant, rather, this is a 12-foot wide true bypass lane, to circulate around the site. Coupled with the fact of these 45-degree spaces instead of 60, we did accommodate a nice smooth vehicle turning movement for either in or backing out of these angled spaces. There is a turning movement plan provided in the plan set. The, the turning movements are, are for the larger types of vehicles, you know, the 1920 foot long vehicles. So if a car were parked here, and then on the very rare occurrence that the queues did queue up, a car can successfully tap out without encroaching into this lane, without any harm done to any of these things. This lane is completely dedicated and separated from the true bypass. I think that was one of the biggest hurdles we had for the site. I think we've successfully accommodated the commission's concerns, and like I said, sometimes you don't get it right the first time until you hear from it, back to the drawing board. We were able to accommodate the bypass at the top of the site, or this front drive-out here to the side. We understand that another concern was to the residential properties to the northwest here, and the original proposal had a six-foot, six-foot-high white vinyl fence, kind of hovering where the cursor is here, and I believe one of the commission members wanted some more vegetation here, so I'll, I'll kind of zoom in a little bit. What we were able to do is we were able to tighten up the fence right up against the sidewalk and went back to our landscape architect. He picked out the perfect, providing the American pillar arborvitae. It's a nice thin pencil arborvitae, we can get them at six feet tall installed, so it'll be, it'll be as high as the fence and it'll continue to grow a little bit after that, but we arm it up, have it nice and tight for a nice screen, so the neighbors will see the arborvitae screen versus the white vinyl fence screen. So again, two, two more significant hurdles, we were able to accommodate concerns brought last time from the commission. I know another comment was to add an additional site, rather crosswalk, so we got an additional crosswalk here, so new vehicles coming in, they can immediately notice the crosswalk striping slow down, pedestrians, the cross axes, sidewalk from parking spaces, and enter the building if they choose. A, another comment was regarding site lighting. This was actually from the engineering department, where the, the town engineer requested to try to obtain that maximum of .25 foot candles along this property line here, realizing it's a little sensitive. The, the previous plan set had the light poles essentially right up against the back of curb here, which would be in close proximity of the property line. What we were able to do is hold the light poles more interior to the site. We see one here, there's actually one here, it's for some reason not shown, but it is in the site plant, right in this location here, and we pulled this third one off the, off the park line over here, that does, it achieves not only that max .25 foot candle, but actually the majority is zero, light candles along the entire property line. So again, feel like we've satisfied another concern from the town, hopefully you guys can see that, too. I talked about the vehicular turning movements of a parked car parked here, not encroaching into the drive-through lane. I believe another comment was for, what is the largest vehicle that this site can accommodate for deliveries, and it would be a 50-foot trailer, WB50, we call it. There is a turning movement plan on the same sheet as the vehicles, it's sheet number TT-1, and what it does is it does show a WB50, a 50-foot tractor.
Thank you. Let's see. I can't control what people do.
Well, you definitely have some that you haven't responded to, and you uploaded.
We need everyone online to.
Please use your mic.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, you're done?
Can you stop sharing for a second?
Sarah, can you mute?
Is it Sarah?
It's Sarah.
Oh, it's Sarah.
We're gonna have to walk around.
She's not listening. Sarah. Sarah Stroud?
Yes.
Do you have her number?
She got it.
Okay. I, I know the WB50 was a hot topic, so. Again, on, on what was submitted, she's a TT-1 client, does show the WB50 being current.
No, I got this from.
Do you have her number? She heard.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna.
It does show the vehicle entering from Monroe Turnpike, navigating through the bypass lane here, stopping at the loading zone, backing up slightly, and then taking a left out onto Spring Hill Road, so that should not be an issue. And then lastly, the requirement, Rich Root's had to be to us to, bypass lane, or on the back of the drive-through, this, this lane here, it's, it's currently 10 feet wide, and Rick, I guess, had met with the fire marshal and the police chief and said, you know, we want a little bit wider for emergency vehicles. So to kind of play with the, with the needs of, you know, what the town, emergency vehicles need, and just general Starbucks not having people cheat, cheat the queue, one suggestion we're offering, what we propose, you know, we can talk about this if you feel necessary, but right here, you can see that there is a, a concrete island right here, and another one right here, that essentially splits the bypass and the drive-through queuing. This bypass is still 10 feet, and these islands were always proposed as two feet wide, but we made a change, we made a change to the detail to be, to have it be a four-foot, I'm sorry, a four-inch high and mountable, so it'd be angled, mountable, four inches, it's not the six inches, so you know it could be bouncing over the thing, but four inches is just enough for any passenger car going through there to know that, hey, there's something there, I can't just cut the queue, but it does allow for the mountability for a fire truck or emergency vehicle to get through there if they need that extra two feet. So 10-foot lane with a two-foot mountable, we do feel we have accommodated the total 12-foot wide lane request that they wanted. Certainly open to, you know, open to discussion, but a 10-foot lane is certainly more than enough. We have run the truck turn templates through there, and we feel it's satisfactory, Starbucks is okay with it, so. With that, I do believe those were the, the major comments and concerns between town staff, engineering comments, and yourselves, so I'm here to answer any questions if, if you'd like to at this time, or you can talk about architecture.
Yeah, go ahead with the rest of the presentation.
Thank you.
Save questions for the end.
For the record, my name is Rich Root. I'm an architect at MRA, assisting with Monroe Starbucks project. As you can see, this is a, this project consists of a single floor, it's a packed building, it's about 25 square feet. They're just showing aerial views of the site plan that Mark had just shared. And here is, here's an image of the building showing the different materials. Another image showing the, if you come into the site, nice to drive, the drive-through, this is the, back here is the fence that Mark had spoken of, as well as the plantings. Here's another view of the building, just for a different, a different angle. Again, I'm just kind of going around the site, another view of the building, how the, how the drive-through works, you can see the, again, you can see the fence here, as well as the plantings, and then on the view of the building, the, I guess, the side of the building, and then this here's a close-up. On the view of the drive-through, again, you can see the amenable curbs that Mark had spoken about, as well as the privacy fence and the plantings. And there's just a nighttime view showing where the lights are on the actual building. So let me step back, and I'll describe. Let's see, my mother. If you can zoom in here, I'll describe the, the building. Okay, so with regard to materials, this building consists of four different materials. Starting from the sidewalk, here and going up to 10-foot eight is horizontally stacked brick. The brick and the, and the mortar are color matched, it's a light silver gray color. From 10-foot eight all the way up to the top of the roof, that's the same brick, same light gray color, only it's vertically stacked. As accent, we, we use acoya wood siding around the drive-through area right here, as well as above the storefront area, which extends from this corner and extends and wraps the corner. That's acoya wood siding, it's, it's, it's light gray in finish also to complement the brick. Okay. On the underside of the canopy, you can find us to be up here, is. The underside of the canopy, we use that same acoya wood siding, except in a, in a medium brown color. The only other color on this building is the flat black, which, so flat black, the storefront is black, the canopy is black, as is the coping, the downsides, as well as either linear. Building's 22 feet in height, that, that, that wall continues around the entire building for consistency and to help screen any mechanical equipment. So that pretty much describes the building, unless anyone has any questions or comments, I can open back up.
What was the color change from the pallet that ARB approved?
So the, I have, I brought a sample, I brought a sample of this pallet here, which I can share.
So what, what did ARB originally approve, though? That is changing, I guess is the question.
So the ARB, the pallet that we had originally submitted was light gray brick, gray Ethis, and a really dark gray wood. As Mark mentioned, I believe, they, they didn't like the dark colors. The second pallet that we submitted was this Starbucks pallet B, which was white brick, white Ethis, same medium wood on the, on the, on the bottom, and then the light gray wood. Okay, so what this is, a combination of both, where we use the light gray brick with the light gray wood, wood siding.
So ARB was white, and now it's gray?
Right, right. It was white brick with white Ethis. Thankfully, we were able to work within to remove the Ethis completely, so this entire wall right here is, is completely brick, which is a better, better product, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one more question, I'll spark up questions. Just wanted to make sure.
For the record, Kevin Kribsen, through Lafayette Street, Monford. One of the other comments or concerns was the size of the district, and we were asking for a zone text change because we were at about .9 acres, and I think some of the commissioners had some hesitations about allowing us to take advantage or use the opportunity within the regulations for the STD 3, because we didn't have a parcel that was a minimum of one acre in size. So based on those comments, went back and researched the regulations, I had some conversations with the town attorney, we realized we were, you know, it was our parcel that was the .9 acres right now, we're still working to gain some additional land, but that would be minimal, it might bring us up to one acre, it might not. But the, the actual regulation requirement is the district size, and in looking at your regulations and confirming it with the town attorney, Finn Marino and Barbara Schellenberg, we realized that an interpretation of the, where the zone line extends to, usually extends to about the center line of the street, which is typical for most communities, so the actual zone district is about 1.4 acres. So we don't need the, we don't need the zone text amendment for the less than one acre. So, and I did confirm that with the town attorney, and have some conversations with Mr. Schultz about that as well, that he agrees, town attorney agrees with my interpretation of that. So we would withdraw that zone text application, that, that's the first application, I believe, on the agenda, the.
The ARB is 23-07.
Yes.
Okay.
Ending your questions.
Okay, then we'll have the commission. So you're ready?
No, sorry, no questions.
We'll start with Commissioner Smugge.
Proposing it with the.
That's not, that's a computer run.
I'm saying.
Color, yeah, it is.
It's nice. I think you guys did a great job with our concerns, adjusting the building, especially with the screening for the neighbors. I don't have any other questions.
No questions at this time.
For the drive-through, there's also mobile ordering, so people line up in the drive-through to pick up mobile orders, is that something that happens also?
Yeah, four spaces. Yeah, so.
Could you mention the concern about cutting the queue, but it's past the order window or the board, so I figured if they were going to cut the queue, what are they going to do if they?
So what Starbucks likes to do with the new online mobile ordering, again, Mark Rocky with VHB, these four spaces will be signed as time-limited spaces specific for mobile pickup, so if you order something on your mobile, you can quickly pull into one of these four spaces, walk in the store.
Do you go through the drive-through for mobile orders, or no?
You can.
You could do that also?
I've done that plenty of times in Starbucks, yeah.
I had gone to the Panera and looked, and it's very similar kind of plan out there, set up, they have that merging drive-through, and I went a couple times during busy hours, and it, it doesn't wrap around the building multiple times, so that's it.
Great, no questions. Thank you.
I have a couple questions. On your, your plan here, it looks like your driveway goes over top of the discontinue road. Is that true?
For a portion of it, correct.
So that is an easement. The, the, the discontinue road, I believe, is an easement. How could you build your driveway on top of an easement that's going to cross over it?
Well, it's, there's not an easement, there's a, a right-of-way for the adjoining property owners to access their property.
I believe abandoned road is an easement. I believe that, I did some research on it, on case law, it stands as an easement. Doesn't mean that the property owner gets to acquire that piece of property.
Yeah, well, respectfully, that's incorrect. The, the case law is going back to, it's 100-plus years or so.
There's a couple of them.
Is that, yeah, is that the halfway to the center line of the road, and it's based on the concept that if, if no one had owed fee simple to the road before, that the abiding property owners would gain half, halfway to the, half of the road or to the center line of the road, would then become fee simple ownership to the abiding property owner. So just like this property owner would be receiving the property to the southwest of the center line of the road, the, the neighbors across the street would be getting that property from the center line of the road to their parcels. That would be.
No, I understand it, I'm saying that the road is discontinuing.
Correct.
The way I read it, I did research on case law, and so with case law, that I believe that the road stays as an easement, that the road doesn't never go away, is it after 15 years or something like that, of no use of it, then maybe acquire the property, but I don't see where anywhere in case law, I mean, our town attorney is not here, where you get.
The town attorney might be here on.
He is, I think, but, I mean, I even read that the, our first elect, we asked him about the same thing, going back when we took town council, about acquiring the discontinue road, and he said he didn't say anything in case law that.
So what, it's not an easement for the general public, but there is a right-of-way. but there is a right-of-way for abiding property owners to access their property.
Cross over, right. I don't believe to build on it.
It's, there's a, from the center line of the road on both sides becomes fee simple ownership. So, as long as you're not blocking somebody from accessing the property, which is for that, I don't know if it's off the last meeting.
What happens down the road if we wanted to open that road back up again?
That's not, that's something that the town would have to, I think, maybe the town attorney might be...
Vin wants to talk.
Okay, Vin.
Mr. Chair, if I could just... Quickly.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, so, number one, the town abandoned its interest in the portion of the road. And at the time that the town abandons its interest in the road, the adjoining property owners on each side of the abandoned road get fee title to the center line of the former road. So, the fee interest in the ground moves to the adjoining property owners, again, to that center line. Anyone who needs access to a public right-of-way, which is blocked because of the abandonment of that road, would have the right to pass and repass in perpetuity, not 15 years, for the rest of time. Because that's how they would get access to their property. It's not a public right. It's a right specific to the adjoining property owners that are adjacent to that abandoned road. So, title to the fee is going to now be in the various property owners that align the former road to the center line. And if, to the extent that any of those parcels are, for the sake of discussion, is are landlocked and do not have another access point to a public right-of-way, they would have the right to pass and repass in perpetuity to gain access to their property. And as long as the developer is not doing anything to interfere with that right of passage, I don't see there being any issue. The town would not have the right to reestablish that road without taking the property back by eminent domain or getting a private sale of the property because the town has abandoned its interest in this area.
Who wants the easement?
There is no, it's not an easement. There's the, every parcel along the abandoned road has the statutory right to gain access to a public right-of-way. So, to the extent that those parcels do not adjoin immediately a public right-of-way, they would have the right to pass over the former public right-of-way until they get to the public street. So, you know, the developer couldn't put a building in that because that would block the passage. They can put a driveway, they can put something that you drive over, but they can't put something that blocks it. So, I believe, what I'm saying is consistent with Attorney Crusadeian's saying. He and I did go over this at length. And I'm comfortable that the road was properly abandoned, that the fee interests have been conveyed to the adjoining property owners in accordance with the law, and that anyone who needs that right of access would have a statutory right of access for the rest of time.
Okay, thank you, Vin. Does that answer your question?
Well, as I've looked at statute 13A 55 in Connecticut General Statutes. Have you looked at that statute?
I have.
You have, and then so it says it ends up being public easement discontinues, but a private easement remains.
That's what I...
Right, what I'm saying to you is that, so, if there was four or five houses on that road, okay, for a perfect example, you're telling me that it's okay for a developer to come in and take half that road, and that's okay under Connecticut General Statutes?
They did not take that road. That road was abandoned by the town and as a matter of...
It is of the taking, it is of the taking if they're putting their drive-through on the road. I believe it's of the taking. I just know. But that's my concern.
I'm not going to argue with Charlie.
I'm not going to argue.
You have any other questions?
The question is whether or not the property owners have a right to gain access to the public right-of-way.
They do, but I don't think they have a right to build on it.
Well, to the extent that they have a right to gain access, that's what the statutory protection affords them.
I don't believe they have a right.
If they negotiated something where they have now a private easement over another portion of land, and that's their agreement, they do have a right to contract away their statutory rights.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask Marino a question? Do you have a question for Vin? Uh, no, for these guys. All right, thank you. Are you finished with your questions?
No, I have another question for the guy who went to Architectural Review.
Mine's just about the easements. Okay. Can you just demonstrate where the two property owners there would get easement out to Spring Hill for us?
Sure. And I was going to mention, I don't know if you recall, but towards the end of the last meeting, we had talked about that the Tarteaglus had agreed to plow...
Yes.
And also build driveways for those neighbors as part of, you know, part of the discussions with these neighbors. So, oh, go ahead.
Okay, so, one of the previous, or, I'm sorry, not previous. One of the neighbors' driveways is down here. It's kind of covered with the Spring Hill text, but you can see the curb for driving right here. The other one is right here. So, we are maintaining, we understood that we can split right down the middle of the road. It leaves a 10 to 11-foot-wide pavement swath for this property owner here. So, he still has his driveway, he still has 10 to 11 feet of pavement to drive on all the way over here. The developers' plan to make a 20-foot-wide throat to accommodate really both driveways to come in and out. So, if there's ever a park here, somebody can still kind of come in and go down and access their driveway. There is still free and clear access all the way down to that neighborhood and free and clear access up here via this reconstructed, essentially curbed out of the developers' land. So...
Thank you. Commissioner Ambrose, you have a question?
The Architecture Review Board, they didn't have an issue with the building being square. It is that, you know, we're more like into colonial here. They didn't have any questions about that? They had no concerns over that?
I know that they, I'll ask Mr. Rick to answer. Do you have something, Rick?
Oh, absolutely. The Architecture Review Board, over the last several years, has had difficulties with the introduction of these more box-type buildings, national franchises.
Right.
They realized that it is a fight they would probably would lose. So, they focused on the areas where there could be consensus built. But, Leanne, you're absolutely right. They had major issues, but they moved forward and tried to come up with areas where they were all in agreement. Tripoltes, Panera Bread, and now Otepoles. They designed the building, has a little architectural review, a little more potential to... They still have the flat roof stuff, you know?
Yeah, they do, I know. But the front of it, they've done a fantastic job on the front of it. This just looks like a square building. And they didn't have any issue with that?
Oh, absolutely, but the consensus was, and that's why you have a letter of recommendation, to move forward with Palette B. And you heard tonight, Palette B has been modified to the light gray. And that's what Ryan brought up. It's always been a flat-roofed building.
So, does it have to go back to Architecture Review?
No.
No?
Only if this, only if this commission directs staff to have another meeting with them. It's your call.
Well, I don't know, they approved one thing, but now they changed it.
Well, they don't approve things, right? They just give...
No, this is all recommendations.
They recommend to us, we decide if we want to listen to their recommendations.
Okay, well, let me go on to the next question. Let's put the pigeon back up for the queuing.
I'm sorry, for the what?
For the queuing.
Queuing?
Yeah.
I mean, I think this site plan... Do you want to see the next call?
I want to know, well, how many cars? You figured that, they said 15 cars to queue. You have 15 cars queuing there for me? Show that on the plan.
The call out was a little bit clearer than the construction plan here. So... Right, so, from the order pickup point, you have seven cars stacked to the drive-through point. You can get an additional up to 15 at this double. Starbucks is more than comfortable with. DOT essentially rewrote their standards for morning coffee shops to be 14. So, we've exceeded that, 15 here.
So, you have only going down the backside of it? How many you got?
So, then, in that, I would, what I would say, unlikely, you know, very rare, we can get up to four more successfully queued in this...
Down the backside of it?
Well, I consider this the front side right here, right? So, four, so you get a total of 19 constructed queues up here.
And then technically queued back around.
Yeah, but I'm worried about Spring Hill Road. How many cars can you queue in that driveway before you get blocked in Spring Hill Road?
You'd probably fit one more, but...
One more, and then then...
19 in there.
Then you guys queue into Spring Hill Road.
Beyond 20, I guess.
Right, beyond 20.
If they're coming from Spring Hill.
I know that the one down in Trumbull has a big queuing, and they're having issues with cars being out on that main road. And they have a huge queuing, a lot more than you have. I'm worried about Spring Hill Road. What are you going to do about Spring Hill Road?
They do have a very large intersection to deal with with that Trumbull stuff. But, like I said, Starbucks understands their, what else, turnaround time for orders. We've done an extensive traffic analysis, a conservative analysis. Starbucks, we are very comfortable with the queuing here and with the additional lane that we did the best we could. It's like we can site plan and accommodate the building shape and to get this extra lane in here to get all these queues in here, which we feel is...
And I understand, like I said to you, is if it gets, if it gets to the point where on Spring Hill Road, that you're not going to be able to get those cars. You only have one car queue if that lane is blocked up up there. How are you going to accommodate for that? You're not going to, right? You're going to queue into Spring Hill Road, basically. I don't see, I don't see how you're going to get away with it.
The queue is not stationary, it's not permanent.
It is, it is a fluid movement, I mean...
What I'm saying to you is you only have one lane, you're going to have one lane coming down the backside of that, right?
What is the ultimate concern?
My concern is that when it backs up over there, a lot of people are going to come in on Spring Hill Road because they're going to come this way to get in instead of come down 111 to get in. They're going to either turn at that traffic light and get in that way, especially if this car is going in there, it's queued up. And they're going to go around there, and they're going to block up all Spring Hill Road because you have no way to accommodate for them to get inside that establishment. It turns out to be a safety factor, is what it does.
I do fully understand the concern. Again, done the traffic analysis, we're going to go with DOT. DOT understands these morning coffee centers and extensive queue. They rewrote the manual for 14 queues. You know that the 14 is the standard, but we are exceeding that. We're going above and beyond.
No, I know, but DOT is only going to be worried about Route 111. DOT is not going to be worried about Spring Hill Road. I'll tell you that right now. They're only worried about the main highway.
My point is, we...
DOT is not, what I'm saying to you is DOT, you're trying to say that DOT is going to look at this. I understand, they're only going to look at 111. They're not going to look at Spring Hill Road. My concern is Spring Hill Road. How are you going to prevent queuing on Spring Hill Road when you only have one car queue in that lane? You're not.
Like I said, Mark. Apologize for that brief pause, but...
Okay, well...
Some of the studies, we do feel this is inadequate design for the facility.
Okay, do you have any other questions? No, I want to know if we, as we have, our engineer has looked at this, has looked at these plans for this queuing.
All three departments, fire, police...
I'm talking about...
And engineering.
Engineering, and engineering does not have any concerns with queuing on Fan Hill Road, I mean, on Spring Hill Road.
Absolutely, and so does the police and the fire. Quite concerned with the peak demands. Commission members have expressed that too. We saw it at McDonald's during COVID.
It's all...
And they have discussed that, and they've expressed their concerns.
Okay, do you have any other questions? Okay.
Comments? I just feel like we're going to lose a bunch of opportunities while trying to attract national brands or companies with over-restrictive architectural designs. So, you know, pulling Starbucks out of its, kind of out of its lane and telling them to design a building in a way other than what works for them, I don't think is a good idea, whatever that's worth, we're not ARB. And also, the existing building that's on the property, it right now is an eyesore, in my opinion, a public safety concern. I don't like it. And also, the road that has been discontinued is also in rough shape. It kind of mirrors the building that is on that road. And looking at the driveways, which one of them is primarily affected, the other one pretty much looks like it dumps off on the Spring Hill Road when I went over to that, to that site. Now, the developer's been more than generous with their offerings as far as paving and taking care of that roadway, which to me is an improvement at this point. I feel like there's plenty of queuing. You know, I think the argument could be made for any restaurant that has a drive-through that eventually there's going to be, if you keep putting cars in there, eventually they're going to back up onto a road. That argument could be made for any restaurant, any coffee shop. They're going to go onto a road at some point. Ability to put 20 cars in that parking lot, I feel like, is more than enough. And I can't think of another Starbucks that can handle more vehicles than that at one time. I'm sure they're out there, I don't know of one. And as far as the zone district, it's comforting to know that that conforms at this point. I was going to ask you to speak to the proof of the ownership because I know that was a concern of this lot. But I feel like Attorney Marino has satisfied this commission's concerns. That's all.
Thank you.
More comments and questions, I think. Ben, you answered them, and since you've already asked, but I just want to, you know, thank you for responding to our initial concerns about that back area not being wide enough for fire and emergency personnel. I also like the crosswalks going over from the to-go areas just to bring visibility for if we are queued up, anyone trying to get in and out. You know, I agree, could there be more than 20 cars in the queue? Yes, but at the same time, they're constantly moving. And I would hope, hope people would think, let me jump inside, it might be quicker. Just for my information, Starbucks on 25, any idea what they're queued up for? How many cars?
Trumbull.
No, the one on 25 at Monroe. Okay, I'm just asking because I drove by a few times as we kind of get an idea during busy times of how backed up they are. And they, maybe only eight, nine cars were in the queue.
Our regs are eight.
At eight, so that's probably right around. I've never seen them come out on the 25 for whatever that's worth. I've never, and that's also a very busy morning commute. Maybe busier than 111, to be honest. And I've never seen cars back onto 25, so... Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I mean, I think it's a good application. Done everything you can to answer all questions. It complied with regulations.
Dominic?
Did we miss you?
No, I just passed until...
Oh, all right, go ahead. Do one of the last words.
As I understand, Rick, there's concern from Engineering Department and Fire Department?
Oh, there's always concerns with the queuing for our more modern drive-throughs, double lanes, apps, et cetera. They're pleased that the state standards have increased, as stated tonight. Our regs are only eight. That's antiquated, obviously, because of the modern times. I'm just expressing, I'm just conveying to you their concerns because there are moments when everyone shows up, particularly like a Saturday morning. But the application does comply with the standards. And, but it's the commission's call because your regulations give you the added controls for the drive-through.
So, both Engineering and Fire Department feel that their concern have been addressed, or no?
Oh, yes, insofar as our regs currently say eight.
On fire safety.
Yeah, we're up to 20. There are just concerns about the possibility, as some of these commissioners have expressed, about the backup onto Spring Hill. as some of these commissioners have expressed, about the backup onto Spring Hill Road. But the, it's important to note, the application complies with our standards and the state of Connecticut's upgraded standards as well, too. Their, you know, their, their job, the, the, uh, police and fire and engineering is to anticipate worst-case scenario and how to address it.
Now, my question to the applicant, other applicant that came before us were also, uh, national known, and, uh, they were able to adjust with some of our concerns, with some of the concern of our other commission. As far as appearance, facade, and all of that. I don't wanna go over what the federal review board did, but some of our concerns that we have certain standards here in Monroe, and they were able to meet it. Would you be willing or to meet some of our concerns?
Well, we did meet last month, beginning of July, with a different, slightly altered site, site plan. And one of the concerns was doing it in a dedicated bypass lane, more screening to the residential neighbors, uh, the, the, the site lighting levels. We had, went back, and we had a significant redesign to accommodate a dedicated drive-through lane, like we have been talking about a lot tonight, and a dedicated bypass lane. We have enough room for cars backing out, so. There were a number of concerns at the last meeting that we do feel we've satisfactorily addressed. And on top of that, um, I know we did receive the engineering comments at the beginning of July. We did respond to all of the engineering comments. I don't know if engineering had a chance to absorb everything, but we definitely responded to all engineering comments more than adequately. And again, there were concerns from fire and the police chief regarding the bypass lane, which again, we did address. So we, we feel like we've done that back and forth, give and take, and that's why we're here with the modified site plan.
I understand that, but we're here representing the town and also citizens of the town. Some of the citizens feel that maybe boxing look type of thing might be not appropriate for this town. So, um, massaging it a little bit and making it appropriate for the, what we're looking here in this town might be something that you might wanna look at.
Good evening, Mr.
Yeah, just so, just so you understand, even McDonald's in its early days with a big arch had to contend with some of the local ordinance and laws, and they adjusted.
I, I understand that, I understand the concern about the facade, isn't that the, the shape of the architecture? We had, we've had many conversations within the applicant team and with Starbucks, and we've brought it absolutely as far as we can go with the, with the color and addressing as many concerns from the A R B as we can. Unfortunately, the shape of the structure is not something that Starbucks as a franchise is willing to, to, to adjust. So we would not be, it's not that we don't wanna go back to Starbucks and ask them that question, but they're, they've been very clear that what we've agreed to at this point is, is basically the extent of what Starbucks is willing to do.
Starbucks is a company, and they have certain rules.
Yes.
Monroe is a town that.
Yes, right.
So which one prevails here?
Well, that's for the commission to decide which one prevails here. You know, so we've, I believe, made a lot of different changes with respect to the coloring to answer those, to make the coloring more in line with what the town would like to see a later color. But the, uh, the actual architectural structure itself, as a franchise, Starbucks is not willing to alter.
There's no compromise?
Well, there's been, there's been compromise, and there's been a lot of discussions. This has been going on for months and months and months. It's not a, no, we're not willing to try, or not, we're not willing to compromise. It's that Starbucks has their certain standards as far as the shape and structure of the building, and they're, they're not willing to, to make that change. So it's not a, it's not a disrespectful sign. It's just that, that whatever their corporate policies and procedures are and their brand, that's how they want that building to look. That's where we're at. We've tried with them for months and months.
Thank you.
All Starbucks look like that?
I'm sorry, I can't answer.
All Starbucks.
I can't answer that question.
Well, there's all different designs, so it depends on towns, what the town wants. I mean, so basically, that's not their corporate design. It is a line that they brought forward here. I'm saying there's all different designs on Starbucks, they're not all the same. They're not, none of them are the same. The one that we have on Main Street is not the same.
Well, also things, you know, the, the.
No, I understand that, but.
Standards change over time.
Right, I'm saying that, that's not their whole basic design. It's what the town wants, and basically, the architect you more wants. I don't know how that's the one I got in there, but it did. Anyway, that's all I have for right now. Does anyone else up here have any questions? Okay, then. We're gonna go to the public, as this is a public hearing. This is the time for the public to, um, comment either for, against, or neutrally on this application. If there's anyone in the audience tonight that would like to comment on this particular application, please raise your hand. Okay, come on down to the microphone, one at a time. Please state your name and address for the record. And please address the commission, not the applicant.
Absolutely. My name is Vito Gattali, V T English Road, a resident for thirty-two years. Happy to see you guys have come a long way of actually developing things, nice things. I mean, hear big comments about building. These people have been in this town for thirty, over thirty years, investing, and always done everything right. You know, they're starting shops, they're block towers. So they try, you're gonna do something, they're gonna do it. I don't know for thirty years, I was a tenant. I was, I wanna be a property contractor from them also, and they're always good neighbors. They said they're gonna do what they're gonna do, so I don't know what's the problem, or why we're even really breaking the stone. And wasting a lot of time, a lot of money also. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Just name and address for the record, please.
Evening, Mary Jean Woolley, thirty-five Agnew Drive, right here in Monroe. Uh, for twenty-five years, been a resident, raised six kids here in this community. And I am delighted to see new buildings coming up and bringing new business into this town. Because speaking from a taxpayer standpoint, um, it, people are leaving this town because there's not enough new business coming in. So I couldn't be happier than to see an improvement like this and get rid of that dilapidated house that's sitting there right now. So any new businesses that's coming into this town should be welcomed with open arms because people like myself and my husband who are retired on a fixed income, it is becoming ridiculous with these taxes here in Monroe. And many people are leaving this town, and it's just, it's unfortunate. And I think sometimes the town is just too hard on letting new businesses and welcoming new businesses into this community. So I think you guys, I think they've done a wonderful job. They've explained it, uh, they have a history, so, um, I just think that you guys should welcome it and be thankful that there's new progress here in Monroe.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to comment on this application? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Jeanette Palatano. I live at Great Oak Farm in Monroe. Can I read?
Yes.
Um, hello, P and Z, Chairman and Members, Mr. Schultz. My name is Jeanette Palatano. I've been a Monroe resident since nineteen ninety-seven. I'm a mom of an amazing twenty-three-year-old daughter, whom I raised in town. I'm also a commercial agent with Cold Banker Commercial. I do not represent the parties today, but I thought it would be necessary to come in today and speak on behalf of the project. There are three reasons why I think this project should move forward. All successful towns in the state offer services and conveniences for the residences. Monroe is just starting to do exactly that in its recent strategic commercial growth. And I thank you guys for actually being a part of that and making that happen because you are changing things for the better in town. Another reason is commercial growth brings in town tax revenue, which benefits the residents of Monroe, which was just stated by the last person that spoke. What was once an abandoned house, no sense, with taxes under nine thousand dollars a year on a very invisible Monroe Turnpike can now blossom into something so much more appealing. That building's really nice, I mean, it looks good. Uh, with a higher tax revenue for the town. So why not do that? What are we gonna do with this building? Let's put something, something you really wanna see and utilize. The third reason is Monroe has two retail commercial areas, Route twenty-five Main Street and Route 111 Monroe Turnpike. We have Starbucks on Route twenty-five Main Street. We need a Starbucks on Route 111 Monroe Turnpike. I'm not even a coffee drinker, but my twenty-three-year-old daughter and I are slightly addicted to the venti soy chai iced tea latte. So for the convenience of my daughter and I, I'd like to see two locations. But it's not about me, it's not about my daughter. I believe the people that reside in this town will benefit from having the convenience as well. We have Dunkin' Donuts on both sides of towns. We have Subway on both sides of towns. Newtown Savings, Amity Savings Bank. Why not have a Starbucks on 111? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. Anyone online or in-house that would like to comment on this application? This is your last opportunity. Seeing none, uh, then we'll go back to the applicant. If you'd like to sum up, and what would you like to do with this application? Would you like to close it tonight?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we'd much, some of our commissions have done their due diligence. We would ask that we close the end of the vote tonight if possible.
Thank you very much. We'll, if I close this application. And we'll move along to the one, two, fourth application, right? That's S E P twenty-twenty-three dash oh-eight, five fifty-five Fan Hill Road. Um, this is continued from July the sixth.
This is the one eight. I didn't. Not avoid it. It's like a district. My first property. This is the town attorney's district. I think the supporting is the attorney, that's not what it's, uh. That's what our district is, one acre. One acre, it's private property, it's like a district, that's true.
I'll mic your host.
Oh, one of these guys out, or?
On the left side. Thank you, sir.
This is, this, this application, you're taking this thing away from required one acre. Now you're saying that you can use private property for an acre? I don't see that, I don't see it anywhere. We have a minimum one acre. You're telling me for a special design district, we already changed the regulations. Require one acre, and we took it off the agenda. We're not discussing it. It is an acre. It's not an acre, it doesn't have.
Here you go.
You said you talked to the town attorney. Talked to.
Uh, Rick, do you have any exhibits? Uh, this is a continuation. I mean, do exhibits. But you have a guy to do it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, engineering comments from the town engineer dated July twenty-fourth. That is all.
I'm not letting you.
Okay, and for the applicant tonight?
Can you hear me without the microphone, or is my house the?
Uh, you can move the microphone over if you need to, 'cause there. We can pretty much share, you don't worry about that.
Uh, good evening, from the record, my name is Doug Rich, landscape architect with Fuller Engineering and Land Surveying, office in Bridgeport, Connecticut, five twenty-five John Street. You can't close, it's gotta stay open, just ask them to be quiet. Probably already have this, most of that, but that's some stuff. Continue from last, last week, uh, five twenty-five John Street. The project is located on Fan Hill Road. See that? Timothy Hill Extension is future extension, it's here. And we have, uh, Gardner Road is the nearest cross street in this location. Project is located, that location here, on the west side of Fan Hill. And I'm sure everybody's been out there and seen it, it's, it's, um, the project is maxed out in terms of outdoor storage area. The project hasn't, hasn't changed since nineteen sixty-five. Manufacturing facility here, the offices, the main corporate offices are in this location here. We received inland wetland approval back on March fifteenth, administrative approval. We just, we just scooch on down to the. Wish to show it up a little bit better, but you can see this is the upland retail area here, shaded area of the project, it is completely outside of the upland area, therefore we received administrative approval. No impact on the wetlands whatsoever. Uh, what you can see here is basically two additions to the building, surprising about fifteen thousand square feet of new high bay manufacturing facility, storage facility, occupying existing, a portion, fifteen thousand square feet of the existing outdoor storage areas, as I said. Replacing outdoor storage area with manufacturing facility. It's a little better picture of that, you can see. So the addition, on the south side of the building, uh, notch, an existing notch in the building. On the north side, replacing a portion of the existing building, carrying that down and installing another building portion at that location. We've received, um, from an engineering standpoint, storm drainage standpoint, replacing impervious surface with basically new impervious surface. So we're not affecting stormwater, although it's just a slight increase based on the type of material that the rain's falling on. So we've accommodated, accommodated, uh, storm drainage by creating two separate areas for stormwater detention, infiltration, one being up in this area here, another one being in this area here. It's more for, it's able to activate the hurricane or storm event. Very simple. The other thing that we've, this addition impacts is, is septic system. Actually, not the septic system, but the septic tank. The septic tank is within this area here. So we're asking just to move the tank outside of the walls of the proposed, proposed addition. From a sanitary standpoint, we've provided two B one hundred A calculations for, for, um, uh, stormwater. And this area, I think it's been approved by the sanitarians. From an engineering standpoint, the engineers approved it. We have a couple of comments, uh, very simple comments, and I've submitted those on the record. One was just an overflow, and one was an impervious area calculation report. Other than that, storm, storm system is, is extremely simple. No changes to sanitary systems, no changes to, uh, other electrical systems, filthy systems. And that's, that's really it in a nutshell. If you have some questions, I can, I can try to explain this. If you have some questions, I can, I can try to explain this to you.
Okay, thank you. Let the record show that Commissioner Ambrosi is recusing, recusing himself from this hearing. At this point, we're going to go with the commissioners for questions. How am I right with Commissioner Smardiano?
Not really too many questions on this project. It's pretty straightforward. But the last time this property came up, they were talking about extending Timothy Road into Independence Drive. Is there any talk of that still?
Do we need to seat somebody?
Yes.
Okay, so Dominic Benidji.
There you go. You're seated too.
No other questions.
Okay, Dominic?
No question.
I don't have any questions.
I'm good.
No, I just, look, I liked that you're staying in Monroe and adding some indoor storage to kind of take in the outside of, bring it inside.
Offsetting the.
Yeah, offsetting.
The noncompliance. It's getting better instead of worse.
Yeah, so, no, thank you. No questions.
Nice clean project. I agree. Let's go to the public at this point. We have a public hearing going on. So if any members of the public here tonight would like to comment on this application, please raise your hands. If there are any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then we'll go back to the applicant. Would you like to sum up and let us know?
More, but I think I've said it all.
Want to close the hearing? Keep it open? What do you want to do?
Close the hearing.
Or close the hearing? And we will close this hearing. At this point, we'll move on to our next public hearing.
Should we get?
Anybody want to get the ad?
Yeah.
I'll get him. I can use a bathroom.
Okay, the next public hearing is EP 2019, RIA 2023 and ZCA 20, wait, RIA 2023-04 and ZCA 2023-01. Part of the 269 Purdy Hill Road application.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, under subdivision two, there's a fourth.
SUB 2023-03 is also part of 269 Purdy Hill application.
Three public hearings and one administrative.
Yes.
And we're ready for Mr. Comment.
Doesn't matter what order I read.
No.
All right. In accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing can be held on Thursday, August 3rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Be a hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located in Monroe Town Hall. RIA 2023-04, file 1027E 269 Purdy Hill Road. Petition for regulation amendment to amend zoning regulation 3.55B. Minimum lot area, age-restricted residence. District Sound 2 Home Builders LLC. Owner Jay Edwards and Associates LLC representative. ZCA 2023-01, file 1023D 269 Purdy Hill Road. Petition application for zone boundary change, change, change zoning classification located at 269 Purdy Hill Road. Sensors map 021 Lot 18/00. From age-restricted residence to residential and farming. RF1 Sound 2 Home Builders LLC. Owner Jay Edwards and Associates LLC representative. And SCP 2019, file 1619A 269 Purdy Hill Road. Permit approval amendment modification application to reduce area of development at 269 Purdy Hill Road. Sensors map 021 Lot 18/00. Sound 2 Home Builders LLC. Jay Edwards and Associate LLC Representative. Notice was published in Voices twice on Wednesday, July 19th and July 26th.
That's it. Thank you.
Chairman, the first application, one exhibit. Application set and plans. Second application has five exhibits. One, application set and plans. Number two, stamped receipt of application by town clerk. Three, certified mail receipts. Four, traffic study. Five, town engineer comments dated 7/5/23. Third application. Exhibit one, application set and plans. Two, stamped receipt of application by town clerk. Three, certified mail receipts. Four, traffic study. Five, town engineer comments dated July 5th. And six, zone change area use map and narrative. And the subdivision application. Exhibit one, application and plan set. Two, health department. Letter dated May 8th, 23. Three, revised subdivision map dated 6/30/23. Exhibit four, inland wetlands commission recommendation dated July 28th, 23. And exhibit five, revised plans dated 4/27/23. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. An applicant?
Thank you. The multiple project. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Charles Willinger. I'm attorney of law offices of Willinger, Willinger, Bucy. I represent the petitioner Sound 2 Home Builders LLC. And my client is not only the applicant, but also the owner of the 269 Purdy Hill Road property. That's a subject matter of these four applications that we have filed. I have the mailings I'd like to submit, if I may. Now, the property is now referred to as Cupless Farm Frosting. I have, by the way, with me in attendance, the principal owner of that LLC, AJ, or Albert Brasso. And also we have Jason Edwards, our engineer, and Robert Shrewood, our landscape architect. But and for the record, we're going to, I guess, combine all four applications in one presentation. So we're not here all night. What we're asking for again, very simply, is a text amendment, a subdivision, change of zone, and a modification of the previously approved special exception. Now, by way of background, the property in question, and we'll put it up on the, on the board. Jason. Okay, that's, that's a property as you see it on the screen.
Excuse me, can we let the record show Commissioner Ambrosi as we see it?
That, that entire piece contains just over 10 acres of land. And it is currently zone your ARR restricted residence zone. In 2020, the prior owner of this property received approval from this commission to construct, pursuant to relation section 3-5 in the ARR zone, a 25 units. Eight buildings. They're attached units each minute for building. And that development has been built up pretty much. It's been very successful, by the way, by my client. 25 units, tenant has been sold. The rest are on the contract. I understand there's four that are last four various stages of, of construction. So it's been a good, a good development and hopefully the commission receives it the same way. Now, the property on the east, on the top of that screen, is a single-family residence. And that's the property that pursuant to your original special exception was to be demolished. And what we want to do is subdivide that piece off. We want to keep the house. My client, after he purchased it, looked at the house. It's structurally sound. It'd be a waste of his paying to lose that house. But the house really shouldn't be joined with condominium development. So that's, that's a portion. It's labeled parcel B on that map. Parcel A, that's a parcel A is the top piece, about an acre, a little over an acre. And you want to subdivide that piece. So what we do is like it's a purpose of text amendment. Because I think that's. The regulation 355B, your ARR zone, ARR zone, has a minimum lot area for this type of development and it's 10 acres. And what we propose to do is a text amendment to change that to a minimum of nine acres. Which would then, as a light. The thing that can sit up of both of course, in my way of thinking, is that we're not amending in any way section 355A 1 and 2. And that's the critical section in that regulation because that's parcel density. And that says if you have detached units, you could have two per acre. If they're, if they're attached units, you're going to have five an acre. And so that is going to still remain in your regulation. And you know, honestly, if I was doing the regulation now, I wouldn't really be focused on the minimum lot stuff for this type of development because it's just a number. Whether it's 10 or nine or three acres, it's just really a figure. I would be actually more focused on the maximum. And because theoretically, you could have a 25-acre piece and still have that type of density, which would, could be actually very harmful to single-family residential owners in the adjacent neighborhood. So my way of thinking, whether it's nine or 10, some other number at the minimum, as long as you have that density protection, there shouldn't be any issue at all. Change of zone, home, single-family, home. You want to change that zone back to its original zone, RF1. Now, your equation, section 925, actually spelled out very clearly, the, what we call the standards of proof. The issues that you was before asked and looked at when you decided on these developments. And taking a look at mine, I'll highlight it, 925B. The standards are pretty clearly set forth. The document was much easier to read. It says in improving, it is approving a regulation, a zoning regulation, which includes a text change through amendment of the regulation. And a change of zone, the first thing you look at is whether the application and the, and the resulting proposed development, if you approve it, will conform to your regulations. And there's no question, if you approve the regulate, these amendments, these applications, we will be in 100% compliance with the provisions of your regulation. We think we meet that test. The second test is whether the proposed zone change is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the regulations. I took a look at the regulations and for your ARR zone. And the set requirement is the intent purpose is clearly in 352A. And what the commission at the time you adopted it, for those, I don't know if you're all on the commission at that time or not, but what you did is you looked at, I guess, the population by yield and you said you want to focus on our residents and the fact that they may, that they give evidence of maybe they don't, they roll out of the house, they're not a big one. And they should have different types of styles of housing. And you wanted to strike a balance between single-family houses and, and age-restricted condominiums. That was the intent. And there's absolutely nothing that we're doing in these applications that would in any way adversely impact the intent and purpose of that ARR zone. So I believe we are in harmony and consistent with the purpose and intent. The next standard is whether if you grant these applications, there's going to be any adverse impact on the public at large or the neighborhood. And I think the answer is absolutely no adverse public, adverse impact at all. We're very, we'll be very much consistent with the neighborhood. We're not changing or adding any development. It is what it is. And you know, I took a look at, in terms of this change of zone, I took a look at your zoning map. And the ARR zoning question is right in the middle, almost right in the middle of the RF1 zone. Which is where you're at, you know, where generally you place these, which is okay. But the point is, if we take one acre out of this 10-acre piece and rezone it back to RF1, we're absolutely in harmony with the neighborhood because most of the neighborhood is RF1. So that being consistent with the character of the neighborhood, I think that, that standard has been achieved. The next standard is whether the applications adversely affect health, safety, convenience, and property values of the surrounding neighborhood. Now, since the 25 homes are already built, or almost all finished, and the single-family house exists, there's, again, there's no adverse impact as far as I can see. There's no adverse impact at all. Property values, convenience, traffic is not having, there'd be any more traffic. So I think we're consistent with the whole vote. And then the last criteria is whether the applications and the resulting developments are consistent with the objectives in your master plan. Your master plan is called the Plan of Conservation and Development. And on page 32 and page 69 of that plan, again, it has a specific goal of having different housing types, allowing them to be built and, and not private. So as your population ages, they can transition from a single-family to a condominium home if they want to. So again, nothing we're doing tonight would adversely impact at all. So that pretty much draws in on the change of zone, particularly the text amendment. In terms of the subdivision, as I said before, we're going to parcel A and parcel B. The parcel B is the 25 units. Parcel A is the home. The reason we want it obviously is that they, there are two different styles of living. And the single-family home really shouldn't be part of the condominium. They're not going to be sharing any amenities and they won't, and they shouldn't have any of the burden of, of the common expenses. So we want to separate that out. The way to separate it out, to get a subdivision and to get a change of zone back RF1. The, I will say for the record that we do comply with all your subdivision regulations. And also there's, septic system has been approved, all kinds of state here, local authorities. Septic system is already, has already been approved. We had to modify it and enlarge it to the home. And that brings us then to the special exception modification. And in your special exception that you approved, if you approve the 2020, it has to be, and it's more, I think this is more of a technical modification, modification. The first one is that it will now affect nine, just a little over nine acres, not 10, these applications. Secondly, it will delete the requirement of the demolishing the home that was in the first special exception. And there's one other thing that we wanted to do to the plan. And for that, I'm going to introduce a landscape architect. Because we wanted to change to the special exception, landscape plan. I think in a very positive way, but I'm going to have Robert address the commission and so that you know what we're doing with the landscape.
Good evening, Robert Shrewd, landscape architect, that's the client. Jason, obviously the engineer, he's helping me. So what is a, obviously a landscape plan, a landscape reference plan. So what is a, obviously a landscape plan, a landscape reference plan that was approved during the original special exception process? What they have was a lot of ornamental material acting as a buffer along the cover of this front road in this, in this area. And what you see, that kind of hatch area that we were originally buffering. And in that plant material, they use a lot of ornamental, a lot of small material. Looking at it from the mind's eye of the town and what the existing property obviously was, a standing nursery, transplanted a lot of the existing nursery stock into this buffer. And a lot of material was much bigger than what was actually proposed on your original piece. So what we looked at is modifying that, we replaced the trees and the material around to give you that string. And what we have is probably what I feel is a better old vault. They're bigger than the most places. There's a series of different spurs, there's some different camispheres, and then some humble trees with flower and color, some hardwoods, some camispheres that also could be put in there. And then there were some oaks, sweetgums and maples that were invested in that. Also AJ did a good job of trying to keep as many of the existing trees that he could along the road to act as that mature buffer as well, given that elevation. There is a complete landscape plan with quantities and everything else. We've, you know, gone through the whole site and done that, but the majority of what we'd like to modify is that initial buffer.
But Robert, your plan has a delineation on the bottom of exactly the types of plants and the numbers.
Yes, and the existing material is weighted along here. The proposed material for the rest of the site are detailed numbers and quantities and sizes, where this just specifies what was planned.
Thank you very much. I also want to point out that the commission, as in reference to all four of these applications, really, that on July 26th, the inland wetland agency were to accept our application to modify its prior approval. They found that there was no significant activity, in fact, no, no change or no adverse significant impact on the wetlands. And in fact, they waived the public hearing. And I understand that they're going to formally approve the application. I believe it's August 23, August 23. But it was well received, it was so not concerned that they waived the public hearing. And then of course, and I believe it's in your record, I just want to point out that your engineer, Jim DeMaio, has a report in your files dated July 28. And he has, said he has no engineering concerns related to either the zoning or the inland wetlands aspect of these four applications. So really, based on all of that, I respectfully suggest that we meet the standards of approving of this. I hope in terms of the text amendment, you agree that as long as the density isn't changed, the acreage is just a number and it's a minimum number. So we'd be not really adversely impacting anything in that regard. And for all those reasons, I would ask you kindly on and approve these applications. We are, we have Larry, if you have any questions, our engineer is here, Jason, actually. Jason and AJ will answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you. We'll see if the commissioners have any questions. Let's start with the question. We both this time?
Um, so I just want to make sure I have it clear. Um, so we are asking to go from 10 to nine for Cutler Crossing. And we're asking to part 269 back to RF1. Maintaining the same acreage it was.
Does that have a question for over one acre?
It may be slightly different, but it's all of it.
Okay. And no other changes to Cutler Crossing, except changing that to full of those. And no other questions right now, I mean, we've never gone backwards on one. So I think that's my biggest question is, do we have to actually change the regulation? Entire regulation?
Yeah, the acreage.
The acreage.
Requires. And qualifying acreage.
Yeah.
Requires 10 acres, so we would change it to only require 90.
For everybody.
Yeah, so it makes it easier for ARR zones, which technically fits with our P O C D.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clarify that since this is our first one going the other way, okay. No other questions?
So what specifically was done with the septic system on this lot? Do we have to comply?
For the record, Jason Edwards, Jason Edwards, associate engineer, sir. There's pretty much nothing was done. We had to design a replacement area to comply with the health code. You have to have a suitable replacement area and reserve area. And the soils in the existing rear of the house are terrible. So we have to put that area over on the side as a designated area. The full required design, so just.
Understood, okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I don't have any other questions, just like taking the P O C D into consideration. This would be enough to satisfy. Questions?
I mean, our minimum now is 10 acres. And so by us changing this, we're going to drop the acreage down for all these, all these zones, for this kind of development. I have an issue with, just to try to change it on one application. I think that maybe that we should look at this a little bit deeper if we're going to change it. I think it should be done through this commission. I mean, we keep on getting these applications that come in that want to drop down the acreage. I mean, you're not the only one. Got another one that come in and it really didn't sit well with this commission because it was, it was seven acres or eight acres, they wanted to change it to drop it down and wanted to use it on, you know, where it was close to a main road and do all that kind of stuff. And we, we know that we have concerns over this and people are looking at this. But I think this is something that should be brought through this full commission. It should be brought into the subcommittee, discuss this, and then move on from there. I believe that I want to just change it for one application. I want to look at the whole town and see how many more of this would affect. Like there's not going to be this one piece of property, there's got to be other pieces of property that's like this, right Rick?
Yes.
So I think that we need to look at all the pieces that were going directly affect.
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner, you know, the good thing about zoning, the way the statutes are enacted is they do allow text amendments, obviously. And zoning is a moving target really, as the demographics of the town change as well. So I appreciate where you said, and I'm not, as I said before, I don't know if having a regulation as a minimum acreage is as important as having something maybe you want to look at maximum acreage for the reason I said, what if I had 25 acres that I wanted to convert at five units per acre? You know, that would really adversely impact the town. But if you have a minimum acreage like we have here and are changing it by an acre, and if the result is you're going to keep a single family home, which actually serves as a buffer around the east of the property and it's completely conforming with the other single family residents, I don't see the downside. Do you have to consider the town as a whole without question?
Right, and that's, and that's why I'm saying that, I mean, I don't think that, I don't think any commissioner have an issue with leaving the house there. You hear me, but I think that we should really look at this really a little bit deeper to see a one or two pieces of property that this would affect in our town. Because once we change something, I mean, you're saying change it down to nine, what if we want to change it down to eight? What if we wanted to change it down to whatever, and like you said, with density and stuff like that? I mean, I think that's something that this commission should look at and then make a decision on that part. I just, you know, when it comes in, like there's people all the time coming in and wanting to change it for one particular thing. And I say in the commission here that it directly affects the whole town. It just doesn't affect this one application, it affects the whole town. It affects every development that's going to be done at the time. Not the rest, it's just not this one, you know what I mean? So we change it for this one, and some kind of, well, you change it to nine for this one. Well, I change it for eight for this one, you know what I mean? And then change it for seven to this one. So you start setting the precedence of all the way down of what people want to change. And I just have an issue with doing that. I mean, I mean, we have a subcommittee, I mean, believe I would probably get better off if I came to the subcommittee for this first and discussed it and then figured it out. But that's my, I'm the smart commissioner and.
I am too. All right, good, you're good.
What are you doing for open space for the subdivision?
What are we going to do with the one?
For open space for the subdivision?
Uh, we are going even, since we don't have enough land, I understand that we're going to get an appraisal of the 10%.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
We have the appraisal.
Commissioner Panici.
I don't know if you want to get in the appraisal, not.
Oh, no, I don't, I just wanted to know whether you were designating open space or doing the in-lu, if you didn't mention it, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Your application is to subdivide the house and the house will be sold separately?
Yes.
Like explained before, it has its own septic and all that?
Yeah.
How many square foot is that?
How many square feet?
Isaiah, what about yourself?
For the record, I'm AJ Grass of Honor Sound Home Builders, located at 14 Redtail Court in Shelton. The existing house, it's a split level home around 12 to 13 hundred square foot. Pretty much similar to the, all the other homes, a lot of the homes that are blue berries that haven't been added out to yet. So it's about a 1200, 1300 square foot house.
I have no problem with your request of subdividing other than other concerns, so that's all my questions.
Would you, will you be remodeling that house, putting an addition or anything like that?
So the intention would be to clean up the house, remodel it, do a little landscaping to enhance it. That's, that's the intentions. What's nice about it, it's, you know, it's not a, it's not a, there's no intention to build a new 3000 square foot home. Now, it's kind of nice that it's relatively affordable from a gross standpoint. The intentions would be not to add out to the house.
It's vacant right now? No more questions?
Okay, so then just addressing Commissioner Ambrose's concern, I was wondering, what would you think about a text amendment that allows a single family residence in an ARR, a pre-existing single family resident, residence, residence to be allowed within an ARR, which would allow the house to stay within the ARR as it is? And it would only require one change versus all the.
Well, if the result of that amendment would be to allow us to keep utilizing that house and sell it separately, that's.
Okay, I see there's a problem there. There could be a problem there, yeah. Because then the house would have, the house would have to be, it would have to stay.
Age restricted?
Age restricted and we would have to meet all other requirements. Okay.
Jason Edwards for the record. The one issue with doing that is the state health code only permits 7500 gallons per day per parcel. So right now, the condominiums are maxed out at that gallonage. So if you add the house back in, you would not be permitted. Without removing, other bedrooms from somewhere else in the development.
Okay.
Based on the total gallonage.
I have a question about the landscaping also. I mean, I've, I've noticed now that the buildings are going up, they're right on top of the road there. And there's not much screening there at all right now.
So we did some landscaping in spring prior to the temperatures getting up. There's going to be a lot more landscaping being done and supplemented as fall comes around. Especially in the area where the stock size is at the core. I believe, I understand that, I've had discussions, I've spoken with people over there, and that'll be enhanced.
So you want that, that'll be more robust, is that what you're talking?
That'll be more robust, it'll be more with, you know, probably quicker, truer buffers.
Okay.
You know, for a lot of, for the home, for the buyers, as well as the top ones.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners before we go to the public? All right, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Either for or against or at all? Please raise your hand, any members of the public tonight online that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hands. Seeing none, we'll go back to the applicant. Do you like to sum up or do you like to?
Wish.
Close hearing?
Okay.
You're all set, okay. Then we'll close this hearing. And we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final hearing for the night, I believe, is RAA 2023-08, 127 Main Street. This is in your application, correct? Yes. Yeah, I got that. Okay, question and comment, can you please read?
In accordance with C G S 8-70, a public hearing where we held on Thursday, August 3rd, 2023, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2023, 08, file number 1031E, 127 Main Street. issued a regulation amendment and proposed modifications to sections 111-303 and 111-204 of the Town of Monroe subdivision of land regulations, as well as special development district number one and sections 1.96 and 2.21 of the Town of Monroe zoning regulations, solely engineering LLC applicant. Notice was published in voices twice, Wednesday, July 19th and July 26th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, exhibit number one, applications set and plans. Exhibit number two, letter from the conservation and water resources letter dated August 2nd, 2023. That is all.
Applicant?
Hey, members of the commission, the director, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineering, dedicated solely engineering. Offices located right here in Monroe, 501 Main Street. Here this evening is Chris Plousky from my office. And also I have moved online, pretty few of you, we're sitting here, we're also here. Regarding our proposed regulation amendment. First, I'll say that we did come through the subcommittee to review this proposed regulation amendment in advance of this application. And what we're proposing is to modify the subdivision regulations in two sections, 111-303 and 111-304. And then to modify the zoning regulations, sections 1.96 and 2.21, and also special development district number one, SDD1. All of those changes we're proposing are really, really stemming out of SDD1. It's issued for the on view multifamily development at 127 Main Street. As we've gone through that regulatory process, we've been before this commission and we've received approvals for those, for that apartment project. At the time of our submission and our approval, we initially contemplated that being developed through a condominium development, so that each building and septic system would sit on its own condominium unit. As we went through the process with the Department of Public Health, they expressed some interest in having us actually formally subdivide the property so that each building and septic system would sit on its own and feature a whole lot. And in order for us to do that, we would have to pursue the regulations before the commission received. So from a big picture standpoint, nothing changes with what we previously approved, other than the ultimate structure from an ownership standpoint, how that project would continue into the future and how much it's structured. So just to touch on the different components of the proposed regulation amendment, subdivision regulation 111-303 has talks about the area of open space reservation. Current regulations require that an area of open space dedicated and created in 50% of the total combined acreage subdivision property. of the total combined acreage subdivision property be granted or pursue a fee in lieu of that. 15%. What we're proposing is to reduce that so that properties subdivided within a special development district only have to provide 5% rather than 15%. And the main reason for that is the property is the commission to remember 127 Main Street and SDD1 actually currently has conservation easement granted, which benefits the Town of Monroe that was reviewed during the planning and zoning process and the wetlands process. And that equals approximately 5% of the total lot area. So we wanted to maintain some consistency there. And I think the big component of this is that, again, this only applies to projects subdivided within a special development district, which this commission controls every special development district that comes through the process. So they have the ability to acquire more or less if a subdivision were to come through under that mechanism. So what lines do you want to change there? Well, what we're proposing to add is area of open space reservation, all subdivision re-subdivision application shall include a dedication of open space. We're saying that 15% of the total combined acreage of subdivision property. We're proposing to add this text.
Oh, I see.
Except for those properties located within a special development district, a required dedication of open space shall equal to approximately 5% of the total combined acreage of the subdivision property.
And this is in case you subdivide the buildings out?
Correct, within a special development district.
This is.
Correct. It only applies to five acres that will be subdivided through a special development district or all projects.
Do you plan on doing that?
We didn't. There was already a conservation that existed on the property previously. And again, we initially pursued or anticipated pursuing this as a condominium development in terms of the individual buildings. But the Department of Public Health requests we pursue actually fee simple lots, which would require the need to formally subdivide.
So you're going to have to formally subdivide?
We would. This application is essentially to create the modification and subdivisions of our regulations so that if this is approved, we will come right before, right, right behind this with subdivision applications to really just carve up the overall property. Nothing else is intended to change with what's been approved.
And the reason for that is the sub.
The Department of Public Health, yeah, requested that we pursue rather than a condominium, the ultimate simple subdivision for the subdivision process because each building and septic system sits on its own, previously used as its own unit from a condominium standpoint. Now they want it to sit on its own lot.
Why is that?
You know, I think it's just part of their, their, their review process. There have been several projects that have been approved through that condominium proposal before, but, um, you know, not all of them are responsible for the Department of Public Health septic reviews that, you know, at this stage, once all the material is written and then people, uh, will subdivide the property.
And it didn't change the septic systems at all?
It changed septic system, it changed ventilation or anything like that.
Or we can, but you're going to divide up into lots.
Exactly. And actually included in that, that SDD approval, we actually had a condominium unit layout with, which, with a mapping that represented how each building and septic system was in its own unit. Matt Paul had simply requested that we actually formally subdivide and create fee simple parcels rather than just condominium units. Everything else stays exactly the same, but in order for us to pursue the subdivision, we have to modify the regulations as we have proposed. And then once a doubt there, if the commission deems it favorably, we'll come right back in with subdivision applications.
Thank you.
So this one component regarding open space, section 111-303. Second component of the subdivision regulations for section 111-304 has to do with the design of lots, lot size arrangement. This basically requires that lots, you know, the lot should be nearly rectangular, it's practical, and usable areas, similar shapes above, uh, shapes and angles that deviate in a tree form for practical rectangular design. What we're simply adding is a, is a sentence that says lots subdivided within a special development district in accord to section side, section 5.4 zoning regulations shall not be subject to these requirements except for the requirements to conform to the zoning regulations. So again, what we're simply adding here is some language in the subdivision regs which would allow us to pursue a subdivision of the lot configuration as shown the unit declaration which we previously submitted. Then in the zoning regulations, section 1.9.6, street frontage, which really has to, has to apply to frontage requirements. And the regulations already have language regarding interior lots. What this we're adding, proposing add to this is notwithstanding that we're going, interior lots not having a minimum frontage on a street normally required shall be permitted in the residence of RF1, RF2, but RF3 districts and in the SDD districts, provided that the planning and zoning commission determined that the development of interior lots is in the best interest of the Town of Monroe, that it will allow proper and formally utilization of land for residential purposes and that such interior lots comply with the provisions of section 3.8 of these zoning regulations. So again, what we're, what we're proposing to do from a subdivision standpoint is we creating some interior lots within the overall pod view development, which would not have frontage on a public street. However, again, the development itself would have changed, the layout would not change. It would just allow us to create fee simple parcels for these buildings and septic systems so they could all individually exist as part of the overall development. So this is just another component of the regulations we're proposing to modify to accommodate that. And then further into the zoning regulations, section 2.1, definition of lot. It talks about, it defines a lot and talks about ownership, talks about having open space in yards in which parcels shall have frontage on a street as defined here in. We're proposing to add, except for those parcels within a special development districts. So again, only properties and products approved through the SDD process that would then pursue a subdivision would be able to move forward without that required frontage. And again, it's really just a, this is just a really good address theme, request of the Department of Public Health. And then interior lot, moving down that section, there's already a definition for interior lots. We've also proposed to add some language which says also includes lots, lots with less than the required frontage. And again, I think this is consistent with what the commission has already established for interior lots and is already allowed to pursue traditional subdivisions. But again, this only applies to lots within that special development district. And then for special development district one, we are also proposing some modifications to that language, which has been approved by this commission under section four of that regulation. For subdivision purposes, a clubhouse could also be considered a principal use. Current regulations define principal uses to only be the apartment buildings themselves. One of our lots, this commission members actually contains the clubhouse and the associated septic systems. We want to make sure that that clubhouse can be considered a principal use as that's necessary to facilitate subdivision. And then in section five, district, we're adding some language there, which really created the principal structures in bulk standards that's currently existing in the regulations. We wanted to add and provide some initial clarity where the district area, the special development district area, those requirements are. So 19.6 acres for the overall area, 10 acres per, 10 units per acre for the overall density. Again, consistent with what was approved. 125 feet minimum for the district frontage. Then as you continue on, we added section six, VI, which is lot principal location in bulk standards for individual lots within the overall special development district area. So this basically does, is this creates additional block requirements for those individual lot areas that surround the individual structures and septic systems. They're a little bit less than what the underlying zoning regulations would require. So we have to create additional block requirements for this specific subdivision request. So it creates different lottery for minimum lottery, 0.75 acres. It eliminates that frontage requirement because we do have some lots which wouldn't have frontage on a public way, but again, would be accessed through the overall development as previously approved. Story stays the same as three, three stories. The height stays the same. We've modified some setbacks because again, because we're simply looking to create fee simple parcels for each unit rather than condominium units. So we just provided some clarity on that. And then we have building spacing, building coverage and purpose coverage that will apply to each individual lot. Again, we don't intend to change any of the overarching special development district regulations and guidelines that are already been approved by the commission. We're simply proposing some amendments which allow us to pursue a formal subdivision of that property to smaller fee simple lots. Again, we have overall intent and operational facility remains exactly the same. The design of the project and everything else, it simply allows us to continue to pursue the Department of Public Health approvals for the individual septic systems. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
On the letter from the open space commission, not the space conservation commission.
So we heard about that today. We haven't received the formal copy of the letter. We understand there's some concern about the reduction from the 15% to the 5% that we're proposing.
Is there any open space in this project?
Well, there is actually. And the site actually has two areas that are dedicated, actually conservation easements to the Town of Monroe. So those areas and the town reviewed our application, actually provided a letter as part of our initial approval that said our proposed development wouldn't impact those open space areas or those conservation easement areas. So, so again, we're not proposing to modify what's been approved.
You've already provided.
There's already, there's already dedicated conservation easement areas on the property which are being maintained.
Why were they put in place? Why were they put in place? I don't think there's.
They were actually put in place as part of the previous approval for the project, for the property when it was a, I think it was a shopping center.
Significant.
2006 also. They are. They're, they're very significant areas both along Route, um, Route 25, the, the front portion of the property, kind of just south of where that Duncan Basin Robbins is. There's a large system through, well, and system through there. And there's a conservation easement in that area. And there's also a conservation easement to the north side of the property or to the right as you would pull into the development. Those are being maintained. And what we simply did is for, again, special development districts, if they were subdivided, the commission is the ability to reduce or, or allow for only 5% open space through a special development district subdivision rather than the 15% that's, that's currently in there. And I think from an intent standpoint, you know, I think the intent of the subdivision regulations is to create for traditional residential subdivisions where you're creating, you know, single family lots, you want to make sure you're establishing that open space for special development districts. I think this commission is, is already gone through an extensive process where they recognize that for special development districts, there may be an opportunity to do multifamily housing or other types of developments through that SDD process. That's an individual, you know, planning exercise for each application. And we're simply requesting that the commission consider reducing that open space from 15 to five, only as it pertains to special development district projects. Because again, I think the commission is the ability to review those on a case by case basis, understand what's being proposed, what's appropriate for the location. I think we can still meet the intent without having the 15% requirement. Now, obviously, there's still a mechanism in here about a fee in lieu of open space or the commission is about the strong, they might, they could require that as part of a subdivision through a special development district.
So you still plan on, on providing for an additional 5% of your total acreage to open space?
Yes, that's essentially the areas that are currently covered through the conservation.
So you're not adding any, it's just part of it?
Correct.
Is that 5%?
It is. Yeah, it's a little bit more than 5%.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, do you have any?
No, I think with that, we'd have to answer questions that the commission may have and go from there.
Questions from commissioners?
No, just I wasn't at that subcommittee meeting, so.
It's okay, I don't remember. Might not have been there either.
When this all gets drawn up and put in front of us, we're going to see a delineated arrangement of easements for the driveways?
Correct, yes. And similar to like commercial developments, which may have, you know, most, a lot of commercial developments these days where they have parcels out front, they have a declaration which establishes cross access rights, maintenance obligations and things like that. So, so this subdivision would include that same requirement where the overall property owner would be establishing easement rights, access rights, utility easements and the like that would go along with the formal subdivision. So it would, it would clearly articulate and show how each parcel has the rights to access the property, how they can get around, how their shared parking, kind of community parking and utilities amenities and things like that.
What is the, if any, potential impact on the tax revenue of this project with this change?
It wouldn't have any impact from a tax revenue standpoint. I think this is, I think ultimately this is really, the proposed changes that we're proposing this evening are really more economic development in nature because it's what the Department of Public Health requested for us to pursue for this particular project.
So we still don't know why, but they're, they're asking.
I mean, it's, you know, I think from a, from a regulatory standpoint, they're certainly able and have historically approved projects in the manner in which we propose it through a condominium declaration, but for whatever reason their preference is, they would just see it formally subdivided.
Got it.
But it will not have any impact on the tax revenue associated with the proposed development as previously.
And as far as the reduction of the open space, just, you know, taking into consideration the amount of acreage that we're talking about it still, as we talked about, the, of a fair amount of space, whether it's 5% or 15 overall, it's a decent amount of space. I'm okay with that reduction. That's all I have for questions.
Commissioner Ambrose?
What prevents the owner from selling off one of the subdivisions after?
I don't think anything would prevent it, but the, the, I think the benefit of what would come through a subdivision, again, as, as well as proposed to the condominium is the same in that there's clear and established rights that created for each individual parcel from an access standpoint, from an operation standpoint, so that it would not, you know, have any adverse impact. If for whatever reason they wanted to, to sell one building to a different entity, they certainly could, they could do that through the condominium process as well. You know, there are a lot of commercial condominiums where, you know, uh, what's the development across from Stone Forum? There's a commercial condominium on, on Route 25 from the north. No, it's, 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 uh, it's commercial buildings, but they're different office buildings. That's a commercial condominium where you can sell each building off individually. It doesn't necessarily impact anything from an operation standpoint, so.
Is the clubhouse going to be its own subdivision?
It would, the clubhouse would be on its own fee simple parcel. It was previously contemplated to be its own condominium unit, and that was identified on the, the application materials that were previously approved. It actually includes the clubhouse and the mailroom was on one unit and they had their own septic system.
All right, thanks.
I had two questions while I was on tax with one of those clubhouse. And now you might have covered the interior lots. How many interior lots have you created?
I believe the, so the proposed development, and Chris, please correct me if I'm wrong, is a total of eight parcels to be created. I believe four of them would be truly interior that wouldn't have any frontage. So it's really just kind of creating the, the lines that were shown on the previous.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't meet the interior lots regulation? You would meet the interior lot regulation?
Based on these proposed revisions, yes, we would.
Now, the clubhouse standing on its own, tax wise, will be a common area, tax, tax?
Well, so, so all of the overall improvements from a project standpoint will all be taxed based on their appraisals and costs to build, right? That's how all the appraisals and assessed values are created. So the overall project, again, will still apply to all of the improvements. So it won't have any tax implications to the town.
Okay, thanks.
All my questions are answered. Thank you.
Rick, do you have any idea why they want to do this?
Department of Public Health, they lock control on the septic designs. Instead of a common arrangement, that's the direction they were going into.
Yeah, but didn't they have control with the condo concept?
They, they feel more comfortable with this type of arrangement. It's a policy change.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, right?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so we will go to the public now. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand.
Do you have a question?
Uh, seeing none. Commissioners, any other questions?
Not so much a question, but a comment. So going forward with the SDD now, because it had to be 10 acres, now it's going to be individual parcels? What's going to be considered then?
The qualifying is still 10 acres.
Okay, but what's.
And within that 10 acres.
They would have to come in front of us and ask to subdivide.
We would decide yes or no if they could subdivide?
Your control is still there.
Not any, not any other SDD. They have to for the septic, but another SDD wouldn't have to be a subdivision, right?
But every SDD stands on its own. So what all this does is, is simply allows us with this, if the commission used this application favorably, it would allow us to come before this commission with a formal subdivision application to create the fee simple parcels. That also includes an application to wellings, is there, there's mandatory referral. And once this is approved, we intend to come right in with those applications so we can close out our permit, permitting with the Department of Public Health. Any SDD that comes before this commission, if they wanted to subdivide as part of that process, would still require the commission to review approval. So again, it doesn't really open up any Pandora's boxes, in my opinion, because this commission still has complete review and oversight authority over any new application that comes before.
It opens options though, right? For developer, they might go, oh, now we could maybe do a subdivision and that.
It allows them to consider something different. But I think as, as we've gone through, you know, when, when the commission reviewed the, the special development district regulations as a whole, we did an exhaustive analysis of currently existing properties and whether they applied or couldn't. So I don't necessarily see this as, you know, creating any other undue consequences. And again, I think the commission has total control over how these projects continue.
From your point of view, what's the drawbacks from approving it and not approving?
You know, the, considering the control that the special development district puts into the commission's hands, I don't see any negative consequences because any potential project that comes before you has to go through an extensive review and approval process. So I don't see, so you have, the commission continues to hold all the cards in how these projects come before you, how they're designed, how, what's being proposed. So I don't necessarily see any undue consequences because I, you know, faith in confidence in the commission and staff to make sure that things that move forward are done in a, in a, you know, well thought out and planned and measured way.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Nope. Okay. Then do you want to close hearing?
Uh, yeah, I think considering we haven't any other comments from the public, we had to be with the subcommittee. We request to close and appreciate your consideration.
Can I close this hearing? Thank you. And then we'll go on to our deliberations and determinations. I think you have one here too. First one is ZCRA 2023. We have show two. This is file 1023E. This is 1036 Main Street. This is the SDD number two. We have before us a draft, I believe.
Chairman, all the members have a copy. Would you like to summarize it?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, the commission has received a zoning regulation text and zoning map boundary change for property located at 10 and 36 Main Street. The proposal is to enable the construction of four buildings consisting of two fast food restaurant containing 38, 3,880 square feet and 3,310 square feet, one grocery store containing 56,628 square feet, and one multi-use building containing self-storage, retail and office uses containing 108,000 square feet with onsite parking for 413 vehicles on a 14.3 acre site identified as 10 and 36 Main Street. It's currently zoned commercial B2 with the MDD overlay district. Property will serve, serve by private subsurface septic system and public water supply. Primary site access is provided to Main Street, Route 25, with a secondary access located to the south, also to Main Street. The commission made referrals to the regional planning agencies. No unfavorable recommendations. Refer to the Monroe Health Department. Application was filed with Monroe Town Clerk. Public hearing was published twice in the voices. During the review, the commission noted the following. The commission expressed their desire to have a connection to Victoria Drive to improve the overall traffic circulation for the development. Two, the police and fire expressed concern that a connector driveway to Victoria Drive was not provided at this time. Three, the commission noted their desire to have a connecting driveway to the Gateway Common Shopping Center located south and immediately adjacent to the development. Four, town engineer noted the desire of relocating the entrance driveway to Lot 4 to avoid conflict with the main entrance drive traffic. Five, the commission noted the desire of providing sidewalks along the entire frontage of the property connecting it to Victoria Drive sidewalk system. Commission and the applicant indicated they will be dark sky compliant. The final detailed plans to be submitted with the SEP application shall be substantially the same with the noted recommended improvements to the conceptual plan to be determined by the commission. Applicants submitted a traffic impact study as part of their submission which warranted a traffic signal for this development. Commission noted that EV stations will be required for this development to comply with state statutes. After a motion and a second is made.
Okay, we'll challenge ten a motion for approval of the 1036 Main Street.
I'll make a motion to approve RAA, ZCA 2023-02, File 1025E as drafted.
Chair has a motion.
Second.
Chair has a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not called at all, this is the seated members starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Riley, yes.
Rosie, yes.
Condon, yes.
Oh wait, Dominic seated?
No, no.
No.
Seated member is Bruno Thabson.
Oh, during that.
Okay. We have four. Yes, approval is passed. Second on the list is RAA 2023-06, File Number 1029E. This is the text amendment, the zoning regulations text amendment that we had heard. The, the subcommittee meeting, I do remember this is the one involving excavation of filled language that was, uh, to be invalided by the courts. We have drafted this denial based on the fact that we've determined that a comprehensive review of Section 6.4 is the appropriate avenue to take at this time. Therefore, we are supporting this as drafted. Chair wants ten a motion.
Now it's on you.
You know you want it.
Go ahead.
Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve RAA-20 to deny RAA-2023-06.
A motion, I see a second.
Second.
Motion and a second now. Any further discussion, Chairman? I mean, not Commissioner Ambrosi.
No.
Chairman Ambrosi. No further discussion. Then we'll call the rolls, starting on my left.
Westland, no.
I would choose I. Yes, to no. We've never done a denial.
Never done this. I'd make a motion, I.
To approve the motion to deny.
Prove the motion to deny?
Yeah. So I guess it'd be Westland, yeah.
Tanner too.
Yeah, Westland, yes. Rosie, yes.
Yeah.
Condon, yes.
Dial is forward.
Mr. Fifth Commissioner?
I'm denying anything.
Okay.
We have never denied anything.
Mr. Chairman, who is the fifth commissioner? We're sitting here for Bruno.
Usually pull it before we.
Dominic?
Oh yeah, Dominic seated. Oh yeah, so you can.
Murgleino, no. I mean.
Okay. We have a, one, the next one is table, BF2023-02 until our August 24th meeting, if we have an August 24th meeting. I'd like to deliberate now on 255 Van Hill Road Turnpike. That is the first, the first two, as the first one was drawn. This is the Starbucks. Direct staff to draft an approval for this. Or we, I'm giving the rest of the commission.
I'm in favor. I'm in favor. In favor.
Well, then draft an approval and then we need to put, we have any? In addition.
They did say that they were willing to, or that they were going to take care of the easement, not easement, the right of way? Is that something?
Right away for the Mavericks.
Is that something that should be added? Is that?
As you notice, we have a provision of the resolution that note, the commission noted the following issues discussed at the.
Yeah, make sure that's in there just in case it eventually sells and then whoever takes over knows that that's kind of their responsibility.
Yeah, that's, that was helping with the design of the driveway, helping with the landscape, wiring of the property. Five blocks. No.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, who's going to be the fifth member for that one?
Good question.
Commissioner Smaragiano.
Yeah, because he was here, right?
So you'll, you'll, you'll state for the record that you feel qualified to vote because you were here, right?
Yes.
So you're a yes too? The consensus, you're a yes?
Yes, I'm in favor.
All right. So Ben, Rick, do you have to end with that?
Yes.
Next we have, I don't think it's a precast. Well, actually we have.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I prepared a favorable resolution because I was anticipating.
Oh, yes, we have in front, in front of us, 555 Fan Hill Road.
Yeah, if you wanted to move ahead tonight.
Yes, with the approval for, I think a precast.
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve SCP-20308, File 1656 as drafted. Chair has a margin.
Second.
Dominic with the second. I have a second.
So discussion?
I mean, it seemed pretty straightforward from what I've seen. It definitely seems like it's going to keep the property and make it even more, uh, a lot of storage inside. So I think it's, I think it's a go ahead.
I agree.
Okay.
Oh, he's up for this.
Okay, so then.
Keep him out of trouble.
All right, let's call the rolls, starting on my right.
Murgleino, yes.
Condon, yes.
Riley, yes.
Westland, yes.
All right. So we have approved 55, 555 Fan Hill Road. Okay, I didn't know we already had that. So then, now we can move on to 269 Purdy Hill. I think we did close that tonight. That is the Sound Two Home Builders. We heard them tonight. They don't want to demolish that house. I don't think any of us wanted to. I don't know why they didn't go to ZBA for it.
It was a sticking, but during the first hearing, there was a lot of talk about that house.
The property owner changed now, right?
Yes.
So that's what it is. It's a new property owner.
But he's still under the same approval.
Yes, but the point being that.
It was going to go.
But now they decided to take this other path. I'm sorry. I thought you were referring that you guys talked about a lot and then they wanted to get rid of it, but.
He said that he's.
It was three years ago and it was a sticking point.
The house had to go because I think we required 10 acres, right? And the house had to go. And I think because of the septic calculation too.
Yes, they were maxed out, out the house.
That came up today. I know, I understand that. But I'm saying that, that's the why they got that kind of capacity because of the acreage. No, Rick, is that why?
Yes.
The match.
Yes. It's not the acreage.
I believe it is.
It's the volume of, it's the number of bedrooms.
Well, it's the volume of the. But I guess it would be.
Which isn't changing.
Well, it adds bedrooms by keeping the house. It adds bedrooms by keeping.
By keeping the house, right. And without removing, that's what I'm saying. So those calculations are different. They're not the same.
Yeah.
So, and as far as looking at the health department, the health department is going to say, well, you're adding an extra bedroom or two bedrooms onto that calculation because that was supposed to be removed. Has it been to the health department?
Yes.
And what did they say?
They can't do it.
He said it has to match.
It has to be removed.
It has to be removed. So.
So asking us to remove it.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion on the text? You, you can modify the text.
That's what I'm saying. I think we should, I think we should look at this a little bit.
My biggest concern is that this, what you had said earlier, that we're changing this and, and how it's going to affect other lots and properties.
I have, I have an issue.
I can't think off the top of my head where it'd be a problem, but I, I do believe that it should have come in front of subcommittee first so we could have digested it.
It should have came from where it should have been. And so we could have discussed it in, in, in depth, you know what I mean, without just throwing it out like this.
We are meeting next Monday. Can I throw something up to please?
Yes, please.
The regulations can, can, can be spelled out as follows. The ARR shall contain a minimum of 10 acres. Notwithstanding the above, a nine acre parcel locate that, a nine acre parcel may be considered that has frontage on Purdy Hill Road and Cutler's Farm. You can really narrow it down.
This is exactly what the other guys wanted over by.
Yeah.
No, but you see what I'm saying, Lee? You can really, because you want to look at a comprehensive.
I would mind do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I can do this.
Right. But I'm saying is.
But we are going to have a meeting next Monday.
Yeah, because we can, we don't deposit, right?
No, we close it. You, no, staff and the subcommittee can look at its regulations anytime they don't want to.
We can take a new.
No, no, but you can, you can modify the language. You can modify your language. And that's why I just threw out, you can lock it in to that specific geographical location.
And can we, in the future, maybe staff save everybody a little bit of time? And because it seems like this keeps coming up now where.
But we're going to have a new town plan.
Well, I know, but maybe Rick can write it down on a post-it form.
Usually it does. He sends them to subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah. But it seems like this is now happening a bunch. And, you know, Leon's not the only one who feels a little like, okay, why are we trying to hash this out now without having our regular?
So it's not like.
You got some big ticket items, as we know. And most of them were, are for the multifamily.
All right, we're going to continue that one to.
All right. So the last one we have then tonight is the, I just heard, text amendment for Pondview.
But everyone's all okay, was okay with the other aspects of it?
Yeah.
Well, I think we all agree we want to save that house.
Yes.
But the thing is, is that's delicious way of doing it.
Right. And I, I think that we, I don't know what, see, I, I like to look back at that approval because I, I don't know why, because we talked about that house.
Yeah.
And we talked about.
Lee, and I'm going to pull that up next Monday.
The owners said we'd go to ZBA, or that was the assumption.
Try to pull that.
Yeah, I'm going to pull that out.
There was a reason why, why we did. I, I know there was. And it was, the, the house had to be removed for a reason. And so I just want to, I just want to look at all that.
And maybe, maybe if you lower the acreage, you lower the denser, upper, actually, up the, up the density.
Density doesn't change on this project.
I know, but what I'm saying is, I think we all agree that we need more.
But Ryan, you can lock it in geographically. You know that.
Party restricted in town. It's something that's come up on the POCB. It's definitely.
But, you know, we don't want to be stacking these on top of each other and making it.
And make the regulation so messy.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying is maybe when you guys, you know, I'm not in the.
It seems like it's coming up.
We're trying to clean them up.
Right. And it's coming up more and more, more.
There's definitely a need for it.
Without the waivers, it's going to continue.
And it keep on, people just keep on coming. Everything's got to be pushed to the sub. I, I don't want to bring it in here like that. I don't. I don't, it comes like that, it's gotta come there, there's not enough time to do that at a meeting.
Alright, but we're gonna meet Monday, I think we'll be able to.
Yeah.
Alright, let's, we have.
Yeah, the chairman's gonna bring it up.
We have the the final deliberation tonight on the um Pondview 27 Main Street changes that um is solely brought up.
They did exactly what you want, right? They went to the subcommittee first.
Yeah, we we discussed that, we discussed about it.
I don't like that we didn't get a really good.
He has to come back in and and change all that anyway because definitely everything has to be, and he's.
Well, he plans on it.
Yeah.
Plans on it.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying, that's what we discussed.
We didn't do a uh special exception on them yet, no. Alright, next, you have a lot of work to go and to do there.
A lot. Alright, you know, the the overlay zone uh uh responsibility comes with it. And you're seeing what I had to deal with in Shelton with over 100 P D Ds. All of a sudden, you start seeing these requests for modifications. Some of them are brought on by state agencies, some are brought on by the market. And, but you, as Leon knows, uh, the rest of you know, you have full control. If something doesn't seem right, you you just say no, you have full discretion. But it it's quite involved.
Right, all the um, the deliberations that we have.
Yeah. And the new applications, we have a new applicant which will be for a hardware store down at Stevenson Lumber. That's the last frontage, you know, by the uh, the church and the uh special event place.
Hmm. Provision, right?
Yes.
So they in front of that?
They're in front, yeah.
Is that the weird kinda?
Yeah.
Design building, wants to be a hardware store?
With the old sign on it, right?
The one that's kinda like.
Hey, you got the storage building, that's John Kimball's, and then the second building.
Going up there.
That's where the uh provisions is in the back, and then.
That's just a mom and pop hardware store, or does it have an? Small.
Okay.
And um, we have that zone change that came before the subcommittee. The subcommittee on 25, we asked to include it further down all the way to the intersecting street property, and we're saying no. Okay, we have no minutes, Mr. Chairman, and you have a couple of dates that you wanna.
Alright, so you wanna look at a subcommittee meeting on Monday, the 7th?
By 30.
I definitely can't make the 7th.
You can't make the 7th?
Oh. Appetite next week.
How about you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I anticipate at least two, probably three will uh will introduce the the new administrator. He's he's joining us on the 14th. Uh, Cheryl wants to continue discussion on the text amendments. Remember for the the structures and the the kitchen area for the accessory. We got a lot of little things, and we wanna get those cleaned up. We have a couple, and I don't know, and then we'll be back.
Corona's not gonna be back.
Well, I'm definitely, I'm pretty much out next week.
So just two of us.
Yeah.
From Monday.
Is this Monday?
Is that alright with you?
No, Monday's not good for me, Mike.
Oh, Monday's not good.
I got.
So Sunday's, the 7th is not good?
Tuesday would be good for me, but Monday's not good.
Alright, so we'll go for the 8th?
Yep. I could do the 8th, I can't do Monday.
Um, I can't do the 8th, I don't, we can't.
You're like me.
Uh, Wednesday, the 9th?
No, I definitely not do that. That's another one I can't do.
Do Thursday, the 10th?
I could do the 10th on Thursday, why do you Thursday? The 10th? Rick?
We have, we have to meet.
Alright, so we'll go Thursday, 10th, but I can't do.
Do you have anything going on?
No.
I'm in Florida. I'm done with next week's, I can't do.
You can do the 10th.
Yeah, we do, we.
I'll do the 10th.
Alright, then we can do the 10th, five or 5:30? 5:30. Or do you wanna meet earlier, 5?
Um, it's up to you, really.
What time you wanna meet?
Up to you, I I could.
Do it earlier, 5. 5 or 5:30?
5:30 is better for me, Rob. Alright, we'll meet at 5:30.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, the special P and Z meeting on the 24th?
Yeah, we didn't schedule a meeting.
24th, which is the second, which is the fourth Thursday, where we would normally have a meeting. It looks like we're gonna need to have a meeting.
24th?
We have it on the 3rd.